We're back. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jones with Veterans in Politics. Today we have Javon Jackson. He is a candidate for North Las Vegas City Council Ward Number Three. But before we go to Mr. Jackson.
Jim, you got any rants?
No, actually I don't have many rants.
Anymore ever since you left that place?
Right, yeah. Interesting how that works, right? No, just doing my thing and one thing I'm learning really quick. And this is kind of a public service announcement for people. As much as you think you might know about something, you'll learn really quick that you're not as smart as you think you are. Yeah, it's been changing careers and things. There's a lot more involved in what I'm doing now compared to what I used to do. In a good way because I'm learning, but it's a steep learning curve. And one of the things that I found out is I was really good at giving advice to candidates. But now that I have to actually be.
A campaign manager?
Yeah, and be the nuts and bolts of.
Now you gotta be accurate with what you say. You can't just be a willy-nilly.
Right, and on top of that like coordinating things and things of that nature. But it's been a good learning process. And I'm very fortunate that I work for a very understanding candidate that wants to give everybody an opportunity. So that's about it. I'm not gonna name the candidate's name right now because we gotta do the endorsement interviews first. But yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, I got two. I wanna thank everybody for showing up to the Valentine's Day Ball. We had about 114 people. Some people paid for their seat, but they never showed. We could've gave that to a vet, so that wasn't cool. So let you know, although you did pay for your seat, but we didn't wanna see empty chairs. So it was about 114 people. The event went well. A lot of people enjoyed it. I'm my worst critic. There's a lot of flaws I saw that we could do better. And we'll make sure we do it for Number Seven by annual, which will be in 2024. We're already looking at a date, February 17th, which is a Saturday, 2024. So presidential year, so we'll see what happens with that. And I wanna say a prayer to one of our members, Michael Yepko, who is in the ICU at Summerlin Hospital for acute kidney failure. So I spoke to him just before I came on the set today. And I just wanna let him know that we're keeping him in our thoughts and prayers. So there's that. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Tell us about yourself.
Well.
Don't leave anything on, Mr. Jackson.
All details.
Because I might know something that you missed out.
You might pull up my background?
I might throwback at you, so you might as well just come clean from the beginning.
I will come clean. So you want the full synopsis?
You're running for North Las Vegas City Council. Come on, you give me the full synopsis.
I'll give you the full detail of who I am, where I come from, what I stand for. I'm born and raised in Las Vegas, so Clark County is my home.
Holy.
Not 29, I was born in 92.
Okay.
So not the most oldest candidate, you know, still represent the youth, I believe.
And not the youngest, when he is?
Not the youngest. But born and raised out here, my family's rooted in North Las Vegas. Much of my childhood was in North Las Vegas, so that's my home.
What'd you pick North Las Vegas to stay?
I picked North Las Vegas to stay because it's a diverse community. I come from a very diverse family where I have white folks, black folks, you know, brown folks. And North Las Vegas gives me that diversity when I'm out in the community. And then just my family being rooted in North Las Vegas brought me back to North Las Vegas because I have lived in all, you know, parts of the valley.
Okay.
But like I said, born and raised out here, graduated from Desert Pines High School, Inner City High School. After my graduation, I was able to get into the mental health field. And I started providing mental health services at a very young age. And I took it to the next level. I became a young entrepreneur and experienced immediate success after high school. And then it was kinda like a blessing and a curse because, you know, when you're young and you achieve a lot of success young, you become naive, you become arrogant.
Tell it to those Raiders football players out there who got millions of dollars in their pocket in Sin City. And this is the worst place for some of those guys, let me tell you.
Yeah, you know what? I'm from out here, but I can't become a Raiders fan until I get a Super Bowl out here. So a tough love from me, sorry Raider fans.
I'll never be a Raiders fan. Diehard Broncos fan. I was born and hate the Raiders, and I still do. Not all Raiders players, but I'm a diehard Broncos fan and I'll never support the Raiders.
Never say never, James Bond.
No, no, no.
Was that in one of his movies?
That much I can guarantee you, I will never support the Raiders. And Martin Davis is a jerk, anyway, okay.
Well, so like I said, I gained immediate success and I opened up my own business. And I was able to, you know, all by the age of 22, I was able to buy a house, own a car, own a business. And you think you're unstoppable when you're at that age because you haven't experienced enough. And you think, okay, I'm able to conquer this and conquer this. So eventually I met something that conquered me. And that was substance abuse. And I start abusing and it didn't take much. I didn't even have an opportunity.
Was it alcohol?
No, it was hard drugs. It was methamphetamines. And it took everything from me. I didn't even have opportunity to become an addict. You know, the first time I used that type of drug, it took everything from me. And I went from, you know, major depressed to psychotic to delusional to... It was a point in my time, my life where I couldn't even respond to people. I couldn't even talk. Like I had words in my head, but I couldn't express myself. And so I went through some very dark times. You know, especially when you have all these things. Like I had a house, I had a car, but I was hopeless. I was suicidal. I wanted help. And there was no real place to get those type of help without being a burden to your family. You know, mental health services are expensive. And I just didn't see the immediate success in it. So a few days I was released from the mental hospital. And my godbrother, you know, he was just released as a ranger. And he was dealing with his own problems with, you know, Army Ranger transitioning back into society. And we just, you know, we were two ticking bombs together. And I was with him and he end up robbing a store.
Seven-Eleven?
No, a little bigger than that. You know, he's a ranger. He's more elite.
Was it Walgreens?
Easy Pawn, you know, a little.
Oh, it was Easy Pawn?
Easy Pawn, so it was an Easy Pawn. And I was in the car. And even though I wasn't in the right mental state, I was just literally just there. And I was literally released a few days out the mental hospital before that happened.
Were you in the driver's seat or passenger seat?
I was in the driver's seat. I was in the driver's seat. You know, he told me to go to this place and that's what occurred. And I was charged for conspiracy robbery and he was also charged. We both did two years and, you know, but after.
Did you plead?
No, we both took a deal for... I took conspiracy and he took burglary. So we both did two years. We were both released.
Where'd you do your time?
I did my time at High Desert. But most of my time was in a fire camp up north in Wells. So I worked as, you know, in the forestry. I served as a firefighter while I was incarcerated. I found peace once I was incarcerated. That's where I found kinda like the solitude I needed, the help that I needed.
Do you have a public defender?
No, I had a lawyer. I had a very expensive.
Who was it?
Michael Perriente. Michael Perriente, that was my lawyer. And yeah, he was expensive, but it was worth every dollar because that type of case normally I wouldn't have been looking at no two to five. He wouldn't have been looking. Everyone that I met that was locked up on similar things that we did were at least four, five years. So I had a great lawyer who really fought for both of us. And so, yeah, so I end up doing two years. And instead of doing all these life sentences because when you get arrested, they charge you for a lot of things.
So tell us a little bit about your time in High Desert. How was that?
High Desert?
Did they treat you okay or did it need a little work or what?
It was... The thing with High Desert, you start off in what we know as solitude, the fish tank. And so you're being disciplined just for, you know, entering the prison system regardless of behavior, anything. And I spent about two months in solitude. And you're only allowed out the cell every 72 hours. And that's to take a shower.
Trying to break you at that point?
Yeah, they're trying to break you, reset you. And you know, basically you're happy with a little bit of anything after being in a cage for two months. So I get the concept. But it's not the best living conditions. It's prison, so you only get to shower every three days. And when you do shower, it's like in a shower filled with flies and all type of stuff. But it's not the best living conditions. But once you get into a program, you're able to adjust. But there's, it's definitely difficult during the time.
Flies in the shower?
Yeah, yeah.
It's supposed to be humane in there.
Yes, it is. It is, so... But yeah, yeah, you don't get no, they don't give you flip flops. You have to buy all those things. So you enter these dirty showers. And you know, it's either you're gonna take a shower or not. You're gonna sit in the cell for three more days and not shower. So those are type of living conditions that are in prison. And then fortunately, I was able to go to a work camp because I was eligible, you know, in my sentencing. So I went to a work camp in Northern Nevada. And very different from prison. There's no brick walls, there's nothing. If you wanna hop the fence and run, go for it, see how far you could get, you know? See if you lose a leg. It has happened. Some inmate tried to escape and he end up freezing somewhere in the middle of nowhere. And they had to amputate his foot when they found him.
Oh my God.
So yeah, prison escapes, not a good idea, people. Not a good idea. But I got this, luckily spent my time in Wells, Nevada, where I was able to give back and like able to focus on myself. And you know, every day I went to work, we, you know, we cut down trees. We worked on ranches. We worked in the middle of the desert, picked up trash. And then when forest season happens, we actually become wildlife firefighters. So that was a good experience while incarcerated. Yeah, 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 I was. I don't know how long they last. But yeah, I was a certified firefighter, getting paid a dollar an hour to risk my life for the great state of Nevada. But it was my way to give back. But yeah, it's dangerous work and you hardly get paid anything. But in my way, it was giving back. But some people, you know, it's kinda.
Why would you choose not to do it?
You go back to prison. If you don't wanna work, you go back to prison. You go back to those concrete walls, those gun towers.
So it was a better living condition.
Compared to prison, yes. And just more free will, you know? I was able to, you know, wake up and go jogging, you know? There was a pond where I was at, you know? Just put it like that. So it's either you're gonna work for nothing because when it's not fire season, you only make a dollar a day, you know? So you work from 8 to 4 p.m. and you get a dollar. So it's either you work or you go back to prison.
You can never put a price in prison, I mean, on freedom.
On freedom, and it's like that, was it the 13th?
Did I say you can never put a price on prison?
You can put a price on prison. They're putting prices on prison, I tell you that. It's profit in prisons. There's a big price in prison.
I'm sure the rest. So what made you wanna run for?
Oh, 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 we still in this bio here. We still in the bio?
We still in this bio.
We doing the bio?
We still.
Doing the bio?
We still, because I know somewhere stuff about you. Keep going.
Okay, well, what you looking for?
He said what you looking for.
Oh man, okay. So I did that. I did my bid. You know, I got out, I got out on parole. And I decided, me myself, because even though I haven't used drugs since 2015 and I was never really considered myself an addict, I went into the Samaritan House and I made sure I got treatment, got the services that I needed before transitioning back into society. A lot of these cats need that, you know? They need to learn how to use a cellphone or a computer. So I went there at the transitional house, you know, thanked the Samaritan House for the work they do.
Was that a felony charge, what you get?
Felony, yeah. So I am a felon on my record. I do have a felony. So but when I.
What greater felony do you know?
It's a violent felony. It's considered a violent crime. I believe it's category.
For sitting in the car?
Yeah.
That's a violent crime?
Conspiracy of robbery is a violent crime.
You didn't get out the car?
No, no.
I was just asking out of curiosity. There's different levels and a lot of people don't understand that.
Gross misdemeanor.
I think it's almost a B or a C. They rated, even though I had a conspiracy because it was robbery, it's more violent than burglary and all these other things. So I was treated as a, you know, a high profile, like category B felon. You know, and there's, just let people know, there's A, B, C.
So they had you in prison with rapists, murderers and all those?
Yeah, I was, yeah, high security type setting. Regardless if, you know, and that's just conspiracy. And that's just crazy, you know? You could do hard time and be impacted the rest of your life for a conspiracy charge, so.
But don't you need that off your record to run for office?
No, so the beautiful thing about AB 431, which was passed in 2019 in July, it gives the civil liberties to people who are felons to vote. And that's the only thing you need to run for office. You need to, you know, have your civil liberties like voting. So with that, even though, you know, I'm pretty sure that law wasn't geared to make, allow felons to vote, but that, it allowed that.
Run for office?
Yeah, I mean, my bad, run for office. It was meant for people to vote, but yeah, for them to run for office. But that's what it made possible for me to do.
But once you've done your time, as long as you've done everything that you're supposed to do with the legal system, then. I think that's kind of a good thing. Like if you, you know, you got found guilty and you paid your time.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of discussions about that and how people feel about, you know, constantly punish people after their sentencing. And it's like a debate that we could have forever.
People talking about crap that I done or might have done 30 years ago. 30 years ago. And the people that's talking crap wasn't even born when I was doing the crap. You know what I mean? It's like a lifetime ago. Shut the hell up!
You know, we all make mistakes in life. And as long as we've done something and try to correct it, then.
I feel the same way. I know I wasn't the same person I was three years ago, five years ago. I know you said 30 years ago, you nowhere near the person you were.
I'm only 22. All right, so going back to Jim's question, why you?
What made me run for city council? So I've always been interested in politics growing up as a child. And when I got out of prison, I got involved with this organization called Mass Liberation Project. And they work with people who are, you know, formerly incarcerated. And they actually have these people engaged in politics, working on legislation and things like that. And there was a law that was created in the city of Las Vegas against homelessness. And I seen the impact that local legislation could have on the most vulnerable populations. And you know, I felt, you know, criminalizing homelessness is... There's a better approach to start with than just throwing homeless folks into jail, you know, because we know there's an underlying condition with those homeless people and they need treatment. So me seeing how that legislation impacted a city, it put me in a position where I felt like I had to run. Because, you know, the most vulnerable populations, people that are homeless, people that have mental health issues, people who are formerly incarcerated, they do not have a voice. I know when I was mentally ill, I did not have a voice to speak on my behalf or to advocate for me. I know when I was in prison behind them concrete walls, I couldn't go talk to no politician about, you know, the problems that were going on. And then I know, you know, homeless folks, I work with them daily. They, you know, they need representation. They need a voice. So seeing that, it pushed me to like, do it now. Because I felt like, okay, I had to go back, get my masters, get my record explained, do X, Y, and Z. But like you said, at the end of the day, people wanna judge me, whether it's 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. So I just decided I'm gonna do it now.
So Ward Number Three. What are the concerns in Ward Three? And give us the boundary lines for Ward Three in North Las Vegas.
So Ward Three is all of Decatur.
Do you know they redistrict?
Yeah, they redistrict. It hasn't really impacted Ward Three too much. But it's all of Decatur from Cheyenne to past to 215, like on Grand Teton. So that's as far north as you could go. And then it goes down to.
You got Aliante in there?
Aliante, I got a part of Aliante in there. And then so the crazy thing about my district goes from a very, let's see, progressive, very liberal to a very conservative to, you know, from the district from Cheyenne to past to 215. So it's a very unique district. And then so it's all of Decatur from that and then it goes down to about Valley. So it's a very slim district that covers all of Decatur in North Las Vegas.
And what are the issues you see there that you wanna fix? Besides the homeless and the mental illness?
Okay, besides the homeless and mental illness. Well, I definitely want to push for funds to go inside the schools. We've been seeing schools in that district. You know, the kids are dealing with trauma with the pandemic and they don't even know that they're dealing with it, which results in police officers having to use pepper spray and things like that. So I definitely wanna allocate funds to, you know, schools to help them address these issues. Another thing that I do see, I see old shopping centers that could be redesigned and reinvented. I really feel that we need to utilize as much space as we can in this growing valley and preserve the wildlife. So looking at some of these old shopping centers and kinda rebuilding them and make them more, fit the needs of the people of North Las Vegas in Ward Three. And something that I personally, a personal thing that I don't really like about where I live is there's nowhere nice for me to enjoy. You know, I have to go to downtown Summerlin. I have to go to.
You gotta take the money out of North Las Vegas Ward Three and put it somewhere else just to have a little fun?
Just to enjoy myself, you know? I gotta go to Green Valley or downtown. There's nowhere hip or fun or, you know, like, there's no... There's local bars and things like that and restaurants. But you know, you kinda wanna place where you could go out and enjoy yourself.
Is there empty lots around there that you could do this?
There is empty lots. There are a few empty lots. But even looking at certain shopping centers that exist already, if we're able to, you know, redesign where we could possibly, you know, have parking underground or add a parking garage, we could kinda change the way things are structured. So just looking at things differently and how we could kinda rebuild things that we already have. And I know we could do it, you know? They build communities all the time. They knock down casinos all the time. So I think just trying to, you know, utilize what we have and building up and being more smart about the zoning and, you know, parking spaces and things like that. We could have those type of places, those type of districts where people can enjoy.
Who's in that, Sergeant, who's in that seat now?
Currently it's incumbent Scott Black.
Good.
No, okay, so just for the viewers and listeners, what is the role of the city councilman? The role of a. Because you brought up a lot of good points, but I wanna know what your definition of the role is. And it's not a gotcha question, just let me know what you believe it to be. Because a lot of the stuff you brought up are great ideas, but I'm thinking you might be expanding your role a little bit.
Right. Well, the duties of city council is, you know, public safety, the roads, sidewalk. That's all part of zoning and planning. So anytime any work is done on a shopping center or anything like that, it goes through city council. First it goes through planning and then it goes through city council. So those things that I speak of, you know, if someone wants to invest in a certain shopping center, I could be the councilman, be like, I approve this project. I wanna see this project built. I could influence planning to pass, you know, certain zoning variances to get projects built in the community. As for allocating funds, that's more of a mayor position. But you know, being in the city council, we still have the influence to, you know, where are those funds going, a direct influence. So when I talked about that, you know, that's still somewhat of a duty of the council member. And then this is not a traditional councilman. This is not their main focus. But I really want to emphasize on the local legislation part, the ordinance and kinda addressing ordinance that kinda impact or create boundaries now that people face and kinda changing that. And I really wanna make that big when I do take office. And I'm actually petitioning an ordinance in North Las Vegas right now as we speak. The ordinance state that no transitional home could be 1,500 feet from any church. So this prevents many, it's almost impossible to build transitional home in North Las Vegas. So right now, we have established a signing committee to remove that language to get more transitional housing in North Las Vegas. But I know the duties are, you know, they're complex and you have to stay within.
Hey, guys, the livestream just paused, sorry. Do you remember where you left off?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna try to restart it. It just paused.
That's a perfect answer, by the way.
Okay.
Fucking Facebook.
I know, they're driving me nuts.
We're probably live right now.
No, yeah, right? Sometimes it does.
But yeah, that's why I was saying, even though that's not the traditional role as a councilman, I do wanna spearhead, you know, my position on council is to address some of these ordinance that kinda, you know, impact people and create boundaries.
Yeah, and the reason why I asked you that question, I know the way I led up to it seemed like it was kind of a gotcha question. But I want people to understand how important city councils are. And it seems like you have a really good understanding of what the city council does. Because the person that's our city councilman for this studio and office is very responsive and understands issues. And Steve, Steve or myself can call him up at any point. Oh, Brian Knutson.
Oh, Brian Knutson. Yeah, I like him.
Yeah, yeah, so he's very responsive. So it sounds like you have a really good grasp on the role.
Well, yeah, me being an entrepreneur, you have to deal with city council, especially getting things built. Things have to go through planning, zoning, fire department. So I'm familiar with that process because I have, you know, developed a couple of projects here in Las Vegas. So I have seen it from the other side. And I feel like I'd be a great candidate to, you know, for office.
The city council fills in vacancies for municipal court judges.
Really?
Uh-oh.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, they fill in vacancies if an elected judge up and goes before the term is up, they'll fill the vacancy and then that.
Even if they're not a board?
And then that person runs for retention the next election cycle. So knowing that, they do it as a body. So knowing that, what would you look for in a municipal court judge?
Oh, well, that's a great question because diversion, diversion. Oh, well, that's a great question because diversion, diversion and more diversion. Um, a judge that's willing to. Expand a diversion program and not necessarily the diversion program that we think of. I wanna see inpatient diversion programs, cause often that, you know, we tell this person, oh, you go to mental health court or you could go to drug course, but. The, the housing component is sometimes the biggest factor, the biggest risk factor. And you can't stabilize that, these people are just gonna go back to jail, go back to prison, so. I would love to see the diversion program expanded and not just have these names, but actually have, you know, beds and like um. The, the staff to, you know, actually service the people that need the help, not just service ten people, but. Service the people that have mental health problems, service people that do have drug problems, divert them out the criminal system. And to let them get the services that they need to stop recidivism, stop wasting our tax dollars and treat these people, uh, you know? Um, I know right now in Ohio, they started a diversion program where. Instead of sending these people to jail, the people that are having like mental health, homeless substance abuse problem, they go to this diversion program. And uh, they have seen their jail cut in half and, you know, people aren't returning as much because of this diversion program. Uh, so I would like to see diversion, diversion, diversion and just empathy. Empathy, understanding, I understand sometimes we get in a role of power, but. We need to really just sit down and have understanding and empathy and uh. Since we're talking about the judges, shout out Belinda Harris, uh, she's a, a judge up there and she's a good friend and uh. Yeah, I, I definitely, I want to work with the judges to see if we could create something, you know, cause. I know as councilman, I can't do all these things, I can't create diversion programs. Uh, but as councilman, what can we do, can we work together, can I create? A, a way to, you know, maybe decriminalize some of these minor uh, traffic uh citations or misdemeanors or. Um, uh, felon to make a signal or. Jaywalking, is there a way to, people shouldn't be sitting in prison or jail six months. Because they are jaywalking or because they couldn't, you know, afford to, you know, fix their tail light, so. What can we do to uh, you know, to stop criminalizing these petty things? You know, that really targets poverty, it's not necessarily being criminal at all, so what can we do to divert these people? Out the criminal system and, you know what, I'd rather, these things go on my credit and, you know, I. Okay, I owe a thousand dollars, put it on my credit, I'd rather do it that way than go sit in jail for six months out of my life and lose. Everything I have over uh, a minor parking.
And tell us, what, what, what would a normal person lose when they sit in jail?
Oh, well, a normal person would literally lose everything, let's just say a single mother, let's talk about a single, single mother going to jail for. A minor traffic citation, so a single mother goes to jail, most Americans live check to check. So I imagine a single mother is barely living, check to check, so you gotta think one day out of work. It throws all her finances off and she probably doesn't have the money for bail, so she's gonna end up in, you know, stuck in jail. So once you're stuck in jail, uh, who's gonna take care of your child, now you have a CPS case. Now you're fine custody for your child while you're in jail and then the meanwhile, your job is probably gonna let you go because you don't have the money to make bail on a. Something petty, so you lose your job and then once you lose your job, the next thing is gonna go is. Court and then the next thing after that is your house and kinda just in that order, so. You could really lose everything within a couple of weeks and that's, that's kinda what we're seeing with the bail system, it's not.
And that's when the mental illness kicks in.
Once you, once you lose everything and then once you're, but the thing I like about what you were saying though. Is you're like, well, I don't, you know, I don't know everything, but once you get elected, uh. It gains you uh, contacts. So some of the stuff that you're, that speaking of, just because a city councilman. And viewers and listeners know, I've said this a million times and Steve's gonna, oh, here he goes again. City council is way more important than people realize and you gain contacts. And when you gain contacts, then it may not be a part of your specific role, but you can reach out to other people. You can reach out to the county commission, you can reach out to uh, state senators, assemblymen, like. You can, uh, you yield more power once you get elected, just through connections, you don't have to do it yourself.
Yeah, there's a, you have a systematical influence, you know, you're working directly within the system, so. People have to see your face, they have to hear your voice, they have to know, I'm the councilman, this is, you know, uh, it definitely enhance your platform. And that's my thing, I don't want to be the traditional candidate, I could never be the traditional candidate, so. There's no reason for me to try to act like that person, so uh, my thing when I, when I become councilman, I want to. You know, av- continue to advocate for things that, you know, I'm passionate about, I wanna continue to, you know, go up north and lobby, you know, I wanna continue to be. Part of, you know, certain movements and things like that, I just don't wanna sit in my seat and be comfortable, I still wanna be the same person I am. And you know, believe in the things I believe in, fight for the things I wanna fight for while having that position.
Yeah, very well. Jimmy, have anything else for Mr. Jackson?
No, actually, I don't have any other questions other than um, and I say this to every candidate that comes on the show. Thank you for running. Whether you get elected, hopefully you do, but if you don't, that's cool too, um. It's one of those things where people don't realize how hard it is to run for office and if you're not the perfect candidate. So be it, but you, you know, you're willing to put yourself out there and that's, uh, that's a very brave thing. And a lot of people aren't willing to do that, it takes a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication. And unfortunately, in today's political climate, you're gonna get picked apart by a lot of people, but don't let that beat you down.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's, that's my biggest thing, like I get so frustrated when people say. Why is this person running, they're not qualified, yeah, well, at least they're willing to try, it's like I uh. At our ball, I didn't give the best speech I thought I could have gave either, but you know what? There wasn't many people that were willing to get up and, and talk in front of those people either, so.
Mr. Jackson, do we cover everything?
Think we cover everything and I hear what you're saying, man, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a hard race. It's gonna be fun, but I'm not just doing this for myself, I'm doing this to inspire other people like me who have. Made a mistake and they don't wanna be judged off that one mistake their entire life, so. It's just not about me, it's about inspiring the people that's being impacted or may have a background. We are more than just a record, you know, uh, so doing it for all of us.
Mr. Jackson, look into the camera and Mark is gonna zoom in on you and you can tell the folks why they should go to the voting booth. And vote for you, especially with your unique background and um, your point of contact.
Okay, my name is Jovan Jackson, you could contact me on uh, Instagram at Jovan Jackson Action Campaign. I also have a website called Jovan Jackson for Councilmen. Uh, you could also contact me on Facebook for Jo- on Jovan Jackson for Councilmen. Uh, early voting begins May twenty-eighth. And um, it's important that you get out to vote and, you know, trust me to be the next councilman because. If I'm able to, you know, go from the situation I was with being incarcerated and change myself and better myself. And uh, now where I'm at a point where I'm an entrepreneur, I'm an activist and I'm doing good work with the community. Just know that I'm able to put that same energy and that same love, you know, into the community as your next councilman.
Well, thank you so much, Jovan, appreciate it. Folks, that's Jovan Jackson, he is a candidate for North. Las Vegas City Council Ward Number Three, we wish him the best and I'm sure we're gonna see lots of him out there. Make sure you educate yourself and uh, before you go to the voting booth, this is Steve Sanson, Jim Jones for Veterans and Politics, until next time.